To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John? Doug?
Here.
Annette?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
Claudia?
Here.
Alan?
Here.
Jonah?
Yes.
Melissa? New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with this provision, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this regular meeting to be publicized by having a date, time, sent to the record, the Star Ledger newspapers, the Borough Clerks, Borough Libraries, as well as posting in school district principal offices, faculty rooms, and the board office. According to Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in the public school buildings or anywhere on school grounds, including but not limited to parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators will be subject to a fine not to exceed $100.
The position of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach their potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and respect for oneself and other, to develop a responsible citizen for our diverse community and ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, and to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Public comments on agenda items only. Anybody in the public? Okay. Now, we're going to have a presentation by Mr. Vito DeLoria on the Portrait of a Graduate.
Welcome, Vito.
Nice to see everybody. Happy snow day tomorrow. Thank you. Thank you for that. So tonight, I'm here to review our process for our Portrait of a Graduate and then to unveil our visual and then to give you some of our next steps in moving forward with the portrait. So as you remember, we started working on the Portrait of a Graduate competencies and as a committee, we identified our six competencies: integrity, social intelligence, confident learner, focused thinker, global collaborator, and effective communicator. In each of these competencies, we developed descriptors. Some of them had two descriptors, some of them had three descriptors. We went through the wording of the descriptors together and we came up with each of these pieces. I'm not going to go through and read them because I know we've all lived with them, but as you remember, we worked on integrity, social intelligence, being a confident learner, focused thinker, a global collaborator, and an effective communicator. We all good? We remember those, working on those? All right, good. Now, after that, we set out as a group to kind of talk about what we wanted the visual representation of these competencies and descriptors to be, and we came up with our visual. You can applaud because we've worked so hard on that. Come on. So we came up with this visual together. We've sort of tweaked it a little bit as we've gone along. As you can see, we have our competencies. We have an icon that represents each of the competencies. We have both Riverdale colors, our yellow and our gold. Everything is sort of represented in our Portrait of a Graduate. So now we ask ourselves, now what? What are we doing now with our Portrait of a Graduate now that we've wrapped this up, worked on the descriptors and the indicators? So the first thing is going to begin to align the portrait competencies with our curriculum, identifying opportunities to integrate the development of essential skills into the curriculum. As you know, I've been working on the ELA and math curriculums this year, and so we have already started to indicate with a box which of the competencies fit units and how they would be incorporated into that study. So moving forward in our curriculum documents, you will see a Portrait of a Graduate box in each of those documents as we rework them. We'll be providing professional development opportunities for our teachers and our students, understanding what the Portrait of a Graduate framework is and ways to integrate it into teaching practices. That will include some faculty and department meeting time. We'll also be taking a look at student assessments, developing a way to assess these skills that we identified as important for our students leaving Riverdale. How we can achieve those, it may include a performance task, a portfolio, self-assessments, and rubrics. We'll also be supporting our students, looking at ways we can support interventions and skills in the graduate profile. That could be a mentoring program, an enrichment activity, academic interventions. Continuous improvement. So how do we continually look at what we did and then monitor it for ongoing review and its effectiveness as a framework for our school? Asking for feedback from stakeholders and adjusting is needed to ensure it remains relevant and impactful. And then finally, to celebrate and recognize students who demonstrate mastery of the skills and the attributes outlined in our graduate profile. And that is our Portrait of a Graduate. We all feel good? Clap. You can clap. We can clap. We can be excited. Took us over a year to do this, but I believe we've all kind of come together in it. It's been a year.
It's a year.
A little over a year.
Who's counting?
Who's counting? It's ready. Yes. Great. Any questions?
For some time. So when I came in, Vito was gracious enough to fill me in on the work that had been done previously coming in, and he certainly had it all in hand. And what I've been able to do, knowing the competencies that the board has put, and the board and the committee have put together, what I do is I walk around and I try to see these competencies in our students, and I see so many of them in talking and knowing our students. And in fact, today, one of the ones you mentioned was effective communication, and I've been communicated all over the place today about, from students asking why we haven't had a snow day and why we have to have a snow day tomorrow, and advocating for themselves and telling me that, you know, their dog has never played in the snow and they need to be home and play in the snow with their dog. They haven't had a snow day their entire high school career. So that, to me, was effective communication. Students advocating for themselves, giving me a rational argument as to why they think something should be that is not already. And I was thinking of the competencies that we're talking about tonight. So bravo. Well done to the board and well done to Vito as well.
Number one, you better snow tomorrow, otherwise we're going to have a problem with the dogs.
Me too.
And number two, just for the record, it did take time, but we did take a break because the board was overloaded for a very long period of time. And I think it was a conscious choice by the board to put it on hold, I think, for many, many months. So.
If you only look at the amount of time that was invested in it, I want to commend the committee and the board because, you know, we agonize over every word. Maybe we should have gone a little easier. I'm just very happy to see this because I thought this was something important we do early on, and I don't think it was my passion project. It might have been Stephanie's or somebody else's. I'm glad to see it come together, and I think we need to put it in practice. I'm sure there'll be comments, but this could be a living process, right? We could augment it as time goes on if it's not the exact fit. And I do like this logo much better than the other 50 versions of it that we had before.
So it's in its infancy, but in thinking about the framework and its true integration, so I mean, this is two, three years down the line. Not on a continual basis, but maybe on an annual basis, do you think we could maybe incorporate some sort of a context in which growth could be conveyed to the student and the adults in that student's life on an annual basis? Like, you know, where they started, you know, through the genesis or through something else? Where they sort of started out and what movement they made in certain skills and what, you know, to kind of incorporate it between the guidance and the staff? Not from an individual teacher basis, but sort of like from a holistic, you know, all the teachers sort of wrote in and this is kind of the number that, you know?
That's a great idea. I think monitoring it and looking at the effectiveness and then creating those rubrics or those benchmarks or those portfolios is going to be how we measure these competencies moving forward. I do think it's going to be something we're going to have to spend some time reviewing and looking at, but I think that's a great point, looking at that every annually, every year, and seeing how we're growing and what we focused on. I'd like to use some of the time we have for Hock Days, and if we continue to do that, as ways to incorporate these competencies into the student experience here at Riverdale.
Vito, I heard you mention, you know, about with the curriculum and kind of applying these competencies as, you know, I'll say like the first step in kind of pushing that agenda forward. But what is, or do we have a plan or what is our plan to, you know, beyond that with the staff? You know, because in theory, everything should be kind of measured against our portrait in everyday life, in the classrooms, no matter what is. So how are we conveying that to the staff to, you know, kind of implement that and incorporate that into kind of, I'll say, everyday life?
That's another good question. So actually, Dr. Albro and I spoke about this. My first initial plan here to do that is with the curriculum and then to do some PD, professional development with the staff. And remember, we've all been living with this now for the X amount of time, but the staff and the students have not, right? They've not had the experience of work, seeing our competencies, seeing what our indicators are. So Dr. Albro and I were speaking that we would go to faculty meetings, department meetings, and really take some time to explain this to everybody as we launch it this year, giving everybody the background, giving everybody the depths and the understanding that they need to be able to start to look at these competencies and then incorporate them into their practice and pedagogy, right? So first step is really everybody becoming aware, and then second step is how do we incorporate those into our practice? The first step of that is the curriculum writing.
And then is our plan to, you know, almost like, I'll say like schedule that out or map that out? Those like, is the teachers first? It's, I don't know when we're going to publish this to like the greater community and?
Our plan was essentially after this first, this winter break, to start going to faculty meetings together. Or separately. We hadn't really decided how we were going to do it, to start introducing the competencies to the teachers and also ask them for their, for the remainder of this year, to find their assessment of their students, where do they think their students are in terms of meeting these competencies or not meeting them? So that's really going to be the focus for the rest of this year.
I think we should put our student reps, like, just around this and, you know, they embody all of these qualities as we can all see. And you could, we could have an unveiling with the two of you, a little banner, student reps, what do you think? They're like, please look away from me.
Jonah was actually on for it. For Portrait of a Graduate.
So do you like where it landed?
Yeah. I like the design, I like how it turned out. It was a good experience staying with it and just being part of the process.
Vito, thank you for your work.
Yeah, and I want to thank the board. Thank you all for sticking with it and giving your feedback and providing everything. I feel like we landed in a really great spot with this, and I'm excited about the launch and how we roll it out. So I want to thank everybody as well.
How many nights, I just have to ask, did you go home after the meeting with the board?
Zero.
I banged your head against the wall.
Vito, I'd like to personally thank you and the committee.
For all the hard work and 2022 and 2023, between hiring a new superintendent, doing this, the referendum, I guess we're done, we all can go home. But no, thank you so much for all the work.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. See you. All right.
Okay.
Oh, light.
Student member report.
So for the middle school, congratulations on a very successful basketball season for both the middle school girls and boys. Both teams earned a spot in the playoffs and represented the school community in a very positive way. The girls finished their season eight and five, and the boys finished eight and three. Next up for the middle school is track and field in the spring. In December, the RDMS Environmental Club was able to meet the River Edge Environmental Protection Committee to brainstorm about recycling projects the students would be interested in pursuing. This past January, the RDMS Environmental Club ran its first annual Smartwool Second Cut Recycle Sock Collection Program. All homerooms participated in sock collection with boxes that the Environmental Club provided and decorated. Approximately 2,800 unwanted socks were collected. The winning seventh and eighth grade homerooms were Miss Case and Seventh Grade Class and Miss Jackson's Eighth Grade Class. Smartwool will recycle these socks and turn them into new goods. This will keep products out of landfills and allow less resources to be consumed. The new RDMS Intro to Italian Club has been busy learning about the regions of Italy. Each month, students participate in a language lesson given by RDHS Italian National Honor Society members. They also participate in a cultural lesson followed by a fun activity. Most recently, the students learned about Emilia Romana and learned how to make pasta. Thank you to Miss Uzi and her high school Italian students for mentoring our students. The middle school is extremely excited this Friday's Hock Day. Faculty and members have volunteered to lead passion project sessions, sharing their hobbies and interests with their students. The end of the day will provide each student an opportunity to experience two sessions that we hope will bring enjoyment and perhaps spark interest.
So for the high school report, I'd like to start off by saying congratulations to our class of 2024 valedictorian Chloe Lee and salvatorian Melissa Yee. What an amazing accomplishment and very well deserved for both. The indoor track team had a big night at the county meet last month. Congrats to Jack Avantio, Dinesh Dubey, Dean Marucci, and Kevin Hart for winning the Shuttle Hurdle event. Congrats to Chris Baxter, Liam Schwabek, Eunice Grievous, and Lucas Lopez for winning the four by 800. And now for the girls, congrats to Grace McQueenie, Samia Bavel, Morgan Levine, and Christina Allen for winning the sprint medley. And Grace McQueenie won the long jump. This past Saturday, the girls indoor track team also won the group, or the North won Group Two State Sectionals for the third year in a row. Thanks to Miss Uzi, or thanks to Italian Honor Society as they held their first ever food and film festival. Shout out to Miss Uzi for all her hard work putting this together. The Riverdale Music and Drama Department held a mattress sale fundraiser last month. RDTV is continuing their work, their hard work with a few more episodes of Roaming Riverdale as they featured sophomore Yaywin Zhao and our ELA supervisor, Dr. Torres. Shout out to the team Pep Classes and Miss Keel, Miss Vantol, and Mr. Barinello for organizing an opportunity to go to the middle school and have seniors mentor the future Riverdale High School students. Boys and girls basketball held a, held a Oridell and River Edge night for local rec teams. It was a very cool experience for all the people involved. The Guidance Department held a Wellness Wednesday last week. That was to teach students ways to manage anxiety. The Riverdale Leo Club collected 20, or 62 pairs of sneakers and donated them to Catholic Charities Collection at St. Peter's Church. All the winter sports had their senior nights last week. Special thanks to all the seniors for their hard work and dedication the last four years. It was a big week for Riverdale Wrestling. Congrats to Coach Barinello for his 100th win on senior night. Also, very special moment for individual member, for a very important member of the Riverdale community. Senior Evan Krakauer won his 100th individual match, and the wrestling program won its 700th match in program history. The AP and Spanish Honor Society students went to a play called Don Cuitay and had a nice meal in New York City last week. The junior class went snow tubing last week at Camp Gaum Mountain. And big shout out to our track student athletes who participated in Signing Day last week. Grace McQueenie committed to Quinnipiac, Liam Schwabek committed to FDU TNEC, and Morgan Levine to Rider. Congrats all. And upcoming this week, we have our third Hock Day on Friday. The theme is career planning, so all the students pick their, like, ideal future, and it'll be monitored, mentored by faculty and other, like, community members.
President's report. I was away all last week on business, so I really don't have anything to report. So I'll turn it over to the superintendent for his report.
So after several months of essentially having our student reps steal anything that I wanted to say, I got their reports ahead of time, so I was able to pull some other pieces that they did not report on. But so I'll report on them myself, but I also have a couple of things I don't want to follow up on that they did report, so.
So you're saying you scooped them?
I basically scooped them, yeah. I cheated a little bit. First, I wanted to just make mention, in case you didn't know, our Human Rights Club here at Riverdale High School recently held a meeting where they invited two students from TNEC public schools. I'm going to be struggling with their names for a second, but Rada Albatravish and Leora Palavin, both from TNEC High School. You may know of these two students. They were in northjersey.com several months ago when the Israel Hamas conflict broke out, and they were two students of Muslim faith and Jewish faith that came together to seek some clarity on some of the things that they were hearing and some of the things that were out in social media and to try to bring some peace to their own district. So our students heard about this in the Human Rights Club and reached out to them on their own to see if they would come in and speak to us, and they did in the last week, and they were very impactful for our students in this club. They talked to our students about recognizing what kind of a learning opportunity we all have here when these kinds of conflicts happen, whether it's Israel Hamas or anything else, how to look at news sources in a critical way and understand people's points of view and understand perspectives that people have when there are conflicts happening in the world. So I thought it was really refreshing, and I wanted to mention those students, Tess Klein, Naomi Roth, and Isabella Idrati, who went out of their way to do that, to bring this to our district. So very pleased with their efforts, and I wanted to make sure that you, you folks here on the board and also the folks at home were aware of their efforts. This week, we'll be having, actually on Wednesday, unless they canceled, we're still good? Okay. An AI workshop. We've been doing a lot of work in the last, I'd say, several weeks and couple of months with our administration. We've sent our administrators out to some local presentations here on artificial generative AI here in Bergen County. We've also sent them out to the TechSpo workshop a couple of weeks ago to bring in as much information as they could. And one of the things they brought back to us was some speakers and some different presentations they saw that they thought were most impactful. So we're going to have a workshop with some board members, with some students, administrators, teachers, and others on Wednesday. I think it's about a six-hour presentation where we're going to learn about generative AI, but also developing some philosophy and some policy around it by looking at what some other districts are doing and kind of troubleshooting what we think might work here at Riverdale. It's kind of a step into that direction as this is the future of, I guess, the whole world, but certainly of education. education, and it's something that we will embrace. But we need to talk about how we're going to do that. So that, that, that step is going to be happening, at least in part, on Wednesday. So I'm excited about that, and I wanted to make sure that you were aware of it as well. I'm very pleased to announce that we have four, not one, but four National Merit Award finalists in our district. That's Nora Yu, Chloe Lee, Adam Chu, and Ye Jun Choi. I mean, if you get one, it's a good year. It's quite an accomplishment and quite an honor. So we're very pleased to see how they have distinguished themselves, and I want to congratulate them. I think Mr. Pepe, well, I know Mr. Pepe puts something out because any picture that gets past him gets out on Instagram instantly. So we're very happy to, to honor them and certainly well deserved. Upcoming next week is our winter break, as I'm sure most people know, but that's February 19th through 23rd. We're not meeting again until, I believe, the second week of March, and I think we will, I saw a hand go up for the winter break. You got it, definitely. Good for you. When we meet next, we will already be in the middle of NJGPA testing. That's the 11th grade test, the graduation test. That will be happening the week of March 11th, so just be aware of that. We use here in the high school a delayed opening schedule because we're only testing one grade level, and it's easier just to have those students test while the other students are not in the building. Gives them the optimal testing platform. So that will be the week of March 11th through 14th here at the high school. As our student reps had just mentioned, the, the Hawk Day this Friday is for the middle school and the high school. We'll be doing some passion projects. In the middle school, they have well over 30 different projects they'll be bringing to our students. And in the high school, they're doing a more career college oriented piece. We have over 40, at last count, over 40 different community members coming in to present to our students over about a two and a half hour period in the afternoon. So we're very excited about that, and we're very grateful for folks that they did decide to come in and do that. And finally, the snow day tomorrow. I know everybody's happy about that. I've been, Pastor, I could not get through the comments today. I met students, I didn't even know were students here, who had a lot to say about it. But I did take a look, the last snow day we had was December 17th, 2020. So, and from what I understand, we were virtual at the time, so students weren't in school anyway. So you've never had a snow day. So congratulations, you're getting a snow day tomorrow. And as Mr. Samuel said, if it doesn't snow, I'm in big trouble. So it better snow tomorrow. Yeah. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports. John, Budget and Finance?
We have a meeting this Thursday. So, Doug?
We have not had a meeting yet.
Okay. Community relations and technology.
We have not had a meeting yet this year.
Okay. And curriculum.
Just to piggyback on Dr. Albro, the curriculum committee was invited to attend Wednesday's workshop, and we're fortunate that all of us are really looking forward to the topic AI. Thank you.
Not just to say what I suggested, I said policy, and somehow it came to curriculum. I'm like, how does that happen?
It's going to go to policy too.
But Vito has planned a fantastic day.
It's going to be great. And policy.
Policy. We are rescheduling our meeting.
Yeah, at the end of this month.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I need a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll take a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Who's seconding?
I did, Claudia.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Stephanie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes, to all except nine. Patty, January 2nd meeting.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes, to all except at nine. I was not in attendance.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion on 12A? Where?
I'll make the motion on 12A.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Stephanie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes. Next motion is 13H. I just, okay. I just wanted to read it. Superintendent, at the request of the Board Secretary, recommends that the board accept the line item transfers and the adjustments as listed in the financial report for the month ending January 2024.
I still need that one.
I will still second it.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay.
Stephanie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Alan, you are on a roll for very fast meetings. We're just trying to help you.
I have things.
No, I don't think we're going to break the record. Old business, new business. Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to carry over everything from the executive agenda. All the transfers be resolved that the Board of Education grants employee 5125, whose name is on file, and the superintendent's office an unpaid medical leave of absence for the period of February 1st to February 15th.
I'll make a motion. We can do the more? To carry the?
No, just.
We're moving them all.
We're moving them all.
Okay. And we'll make a motion to carry all of the executive agenda over to the regular.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Claudia. Any questions?
Stephanie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yeah.
Alan?
Yes.
Old business. Stephanie?
Well, I don't know. Mine's more new business. Claudia, old business? I kind of have, I think it's old business, but it could be new business. So in the past, and this is a long time ago, and maybe this did, this might have happened, and I just missed it, but the juniors went on a snowboarding trip. Did we get any information about that prior? Like, we used to get that kind of information on an agenda, like, you know, junior class is going on a snowboarding trip, that we would approve, even like, even if they were like, one day, if they're going to World Trade Center, we would approve that. I feel like there's things happening and we're not notified about it. Not, not that we're not notified. Maybe it was a decision that was made by policy. I don't know that we're not finding out, or?
I don't know any other way. This is the, the way I know that we've done it.
So what did?
So there was a field trip that we didn't approve? Is that what you're trying to do?
Yeah, I, yeah. So like, did we get that on our agenda for the junior class to go on the? I mean, they went, they probably have five of those time off, saying that they can't go. I'm just wondering, because like, that's like?
Well, I'll look into it. I, I made no.
I don't remember seeing.
I made no change to any of the procedures that we followed, so, but I'll look into it and find out.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
So, two things. Trudy, when, we, why, we went out for bond, right? We went out for bond, right? We published the bond for the reference? We have, they're being sold beginning of March. Okay, that's right. So I was just looking for the timeframe. That was my question. Beginning of March, okay. And my other is, so we've been talking about certified board, maybe board retreat, you know, how, how are we getting, you know, these hours? And it occurred to me that for several years, we've had staff present at TechSpo, but none of us have ever seen what they present on, they represent us. I'm sure they do it fantastically, but what are they doing? Is it data that they use to make education? I, I don't, I don't know what their presentations are. So, so I thought maybe that would be a good jumping off point to have that whatever was presented at TechSpo to be presented to us, and then maybe using that as a, a framework to have a conversation about how, how that data, I think it's data, but how that data is being used and how we might want to use it more effectively, or any of those kinds of things. That was my, that was my thought in the, in the trying to figure out, like, how are we getting these out?
Would we get credit for, I mean?
Well, yes, you'd get credit because, well, Matt only has to babysit us, as far as I understood. He doesn't actually have to organically, you know, guide our conversation. He just has to be here. And I don't, I don't know how long, like, I don't know if we wanted to commit to a four hour kind of a thing.
No, we have, we have.
They have.
You got them all right?
Yeah, those extras.
Right. I don't know if we wanted to commit to like a four hour thing, and then it's like an hour and a half of the presentation, and then we have discussion surrounding all those. I don't, I don't know. It was just an idea of like a jumping off point, thinking of, you know, they represent us, and again, I'm sure they do it fantastically, but like, what did they say? What did they do? Like, how's it being used? Like, we, we have no like concept of, of?
So would it be, I'm sorry, just, would it, would we go to TechSpo?
No. Like, Vito, what did they present on this year? You have to, wait, you have to come to the mic, I'm sorry. For the people at home.
They presented on effective communication. With different tools, so Canva, Twitter, and our Roaming Riverdale series.
And what, what have they done in the past, right? Because?
Last year, they did the electronic system for monitoring students' movements, like their electronic digital hall pass that they created to modify where stu, to monitor where students were, and also like the facilities use.
Right, so there would be a good presentation to then have our expanded security conversation, which is one of the goals that people tended to.
Now, I was thinking also about, you know, when do we start becoming a certified board again? And I had asked everybody at the first meeting, semi-suggested board goals that we could achieve. Thank you, Stephanie. You sent me a book, but they were all great, and I really appreciate it. So I passed them around for everybody to take a look at. And at the next meeting, hopefully, you know, everybody will pick two, three or four of what they'd like to see achieved, and kind of have a discussion on when we'd like to put these in place.
Have a question. Maybe you would know, Stephanie. Has the board, done board retreats previously?
Yes.
Many years ago.
Yeah.
Do you remember if it was school boards or somebody else?
It was in the month of July.
Oh, it was Al. It was Al and Tiana.
It was Al and Tiana, and it was the best. We had fun with them.
We had the big easel pads around the room, and he was like ping, pinging everywhere. Yeah, it was really?
I'm just wondering if, if, I understand what you're saying about for the credit piece for school boards to be involved, but I want to find out if, do they have to run, or do we have the freedom to find somebody else or something else with them kind of overseeing? And I'm going to ask that question, just, just to give us?
Then we don't get credit.
Well, I want to make sure that we would get credit for it before we, we send it. I just want to make sure that, that that is, it has to be.
I thought Matt was saying they have to be present, but I, I don't think we have to follow their guidance, but they gotta be. I think it was implying he has to be in the room. That was a question.
If we, if we, if he's, if we remember what he said, it was, he had to be present, but didn't have to facilitate if it was us. But if there was somebody else facilitating, then he wouldn't be present. And it was either you, Al, or Claudia, or like, whoever, or like scam. And yes, I know I'm being recorded, but like scam. So.
And that answers my question. I don't have to.
That is how I interpreted what he said?
It might be worth, maybe.
Asking him.
Asking, you know, I don't know if there's asking beyond, like, at, at a, at a greater level. So were you serious when you said this? Is that what we answered? I will ask the question.
Spell it out in writing.
Good point.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anything for, for discussion?
So myself and Stephanie, she was only there for a short period of time, but last Wednesday, we attended the Wellness Wednesday, managing anxiety, it was here. They had great speakers that came in. We had a bunch of students that were here and also parents that were here. Very engaged, very engaged group of people. The audience was amazing, fantastic speaker. I know the staff that was here is hoping to bring them in on a broader specter, like, you know, broader level for our students. So I just wanted to give kudos. They did a really nice job. And the RDEA gave out like really good snacks. All the kids were happy with them.
Yeah, it was a bowl of candy they kept trying to leave along. Yeah. And that first table would have eaten the entire bowl if it didn't, if it didn't move a lot, if she did not pick up that, they would have just.
Yeah, you know. But the kids were great. It was a good night.
Thank you for your time.
Dr. Albro, as a follow-up to Gen AI session that is going to be held, I think it would be helpful for the entire board. Is there a way to pull a short summary version of it, like just the takeaways, for the rest of the board? I think it's a very active topic, and be good to capture like the takeaways maybe, or key points from it.
Because we're going to have several board members there anyway. So it's going to generate a lot of conversation, for sure.
But a presentation format almost, just to keep it?
Correct. It's a workshop. You mean for us, a presentation?
For us as a board, just a quick, you know, five, 10 minute version of it, if there's enough takeaways.
There'll be plenty. I'm happy to do it.
Alan, I got one more. Just for anyone who might be of interest, if they're our feeding district, to sort of update people on, on what's happening in River Edge in their educational leadership. So they had appointed an interim superintendent that goes through the middle of March, if I believe, and, and this evening, they are.
Acting superintendent.
An act, excuse me, an acting superintendent, thank you. And this evening, they are interviewing, I don't know if they'll come out with a, with a consensus or a decision, but they are interviewing for an interim superintendent. And at their last meeting, which is why I left Wellness One Day, Wellness Wednesday quickly, they interviewed, and I believe appointed, a search firm for their superintendent. I, I don't think they set out a timeline. I don't know if they're, you know, thinking, you know, short term for an interim, or they're thinking more like, you know, nine months to a year for an interim. They really haven't given that kind of an indication publicly. But they are sort of moving in that direction, and I, I think it was a, a healthy choice for the district. There was a lot going on, so I will be interested to see who they choose for their interim. But I'm sure Dr. Albro will likely know the person and, and work to continue all that, you know, continuity of, of education and maybe enhancement in the, whatever timeframe that person's there.
Okay. Like to open it up to the public for public comments. Please step up to the mic, state your name, where you live, and try to keep it to three and a half minutes. Okay, nothing from the public? All right. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I will second.
Thank you. Everybody in agreement?
Aye.
We're done. Thank you.